I am great.
You ready to wash, Derek? It's great.
It's all good.
My call is meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board's order. Ms. Sersa, could you take the roll, please?
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Here.
Ms. Emanuel?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
3.01 Certification Closed Session. Can I have a motion, please?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Could I, I would like to add 8.11, so a discussion of the reschedule of the August 4th Board meeting to August 11th. Is there okay to have that discussion?
Sure.
Any objection? Okay. Is there a second to approval of the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
5.01 Announcement Superintendent's Report. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I'm pleased to announce that for the first time in the school's history Lafayette High School won the VHSL All-Sports Championship. The Wells Fargo Cup for Athletics is awarded to the school in each group classification that has achieved the best overall record in VHSL state-level competition for 27 sports. We will invite Lafayette staff to a future meeting for formal recognition. Hornsby Middle School received the biggest Splash Online Award for their school tweets on Rev Your Bev Day. The Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth statewide day of action was designed to raise awareness about the amount of sugar hidden in popular drinks. All of WJCC's elementary and middle schools participated in Rev Your Bev Day. A number of WJCC teams and athletes receive state championships at the end of the school year, and we are going to invite those individuals to be recognized at your first meeting in August. Now, Mr. Chair, those are all the announcements I have.
Thank you. I'm sure some of those athletes will be otherwise detained, like in college. Any Board members have any announcements or discussion?
I do want to emphasize that that was the first time in 42 years or something that the Lafayette, you know, that was really pretty magnificent reward that they got.
Yeah, it very much so is. I was going to save my comments for Dr., Mr. Barnard when he comes, but that, that award is, to earn that certainly is leadership at the top, and, you know, he does, he does a great job over there as the AD with Lafayette.
He does.
Brings us 6.01, citizens' comments. Mr. Nichols?
Is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the School Board, those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. When a speaker's name is called, the speaker comes to the podium and states his or her name for the record and directs his or her comments to the Chair of the Board. In order to promote a listening and respectful environment, please avoid applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration when the speaker is addressing the School Board. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. The School Board requests that all speakers refrain from making any reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. The School Board's role is to listen to the speaker rather than to respond to his or her comments. Each speaker is allowed at three minutes to make his or her comments. The School Board asks each speaker to respect this time limitation. Time may not be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance or adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Mrs. Cordasco, we have double speakers.
Yes, you do. Charles Young?
My name is Charles Young. I'm a resident of the Greensprings Plantation in Berkeley District of James City County. My remarks are about the proposed policy on harassment and retaliation. I applaud the Board for wanting our schools free of harassment. The Board should recognize in adopting a policy like this that the Supreme Court and other courts have upheld the U.S. Constitutional rights of students to free speech. I believe the legal references cited in the proposed policy should be reviewed. The references to the United States Code or the Code of Federal Regulations do not seem applicable to speech by students. The Code of Virginia reference is a declaration safeguarding individuals of specified protected classes from discrimination prohibited under other laws or regulations. The proposed policy says it is a violation of policy to harass a student or employees based on gender, ancestry, and genetic information. These are not listed as protected in the Code of Virginia reference. Ancestry and genetic information are not defined in the Code of Virginia or in any reference or in the policy. Virginia is a Dillon Rule state, as you know, and subsidiary public bodies have no authority which is not provided to them by statute. The first sentence of both the second and the fourth paragraphs of the policy appear to be badly worded. The sentence seems to define harassment as a violation when it is based on a belief that the characteristic is found only at school but not elsewhere. This may not be what you intended. Why base a violation on a belief at all? The section on retaliation and the section on false charges seem to be in conflict with each other. More broadly, I would have hoped that you intended to make our children safe by prohibiting conduct which is objectively harassment regardless of the intent of the person doing it. This policy as proposed does not meet that standard. The policy does not make clear that constitutionally protected religious, political, philosophical, or other student's speech is not a violation even if others dislike the speech or are offended by it. The policy prohibits demeaning behavior which is a violation of law. It also attempts to prohibit student's speech which is not a violation of law, and it does so in an overly broad way. This broad sweep seems to also prohibit some religious, political, philosophical, and other protected student's speech. Before this policy is adopted, I would request that the Board and staff review it carefully. I recommend a thorough rewrite focusing on harassing acts or words rather than perceived intent.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate that.
My name is Tom Estock, and I'm a James City County resident, local business owner, biotechnology entrepreneur, and I'm represented on this board by Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Over the nearly 30 years of my career in large, small companies, I have never had a year as a manager of human capital where I was not dealing with complicated sexual harassment complaints and/or equal opportunity complaints. I am here to tell you as a business leader that protecting employees against sexual harassment and assuring equal employment opportunity for all is paramount to a corporation's success. I want my employees to feel safe at work from harassment. I want the creativity and competitive edge that comes from assembling a diverse workforce, and I want all colleagues to reap the rewards of that success equally. The reason I am here tonight is because I believe that this protection from harassment and access to equal opportunity needs to begin with the children and employees in our schools. I would like to allow the School Board and the administration for the updated sexual harassment complaint policy that is being presented at the meeting this evening, as well as the modifications to the related policies that are affected by this amendment. In our busy world, we can oftentimes forget about enhancing protection for our children, our colleagues, and our employees, and I commend the administration for taking the care and time to update these policies to be consistent with changes in law, policies, and general thinking. The reason why I feel it's important for me to speak at this meeting is because of the tone utilized in all of the proposed policy amendments. From the sexual harassment complaint policy to the equal educational opportunity policy to the employment policy, I see a new strong tone of equal protection and equal opportunity for both students and employees. This is a welcome change. All students in our schools should have equal access to educational opportunity with equal protection to feel safe in their schools without the fear of harassment and retaliation. The proposed policy amendments take a large step in the right direction. Congratulations. The proposed changes in the equal employment opportunity nondiscrimination policy do, however, fall short by not specifying sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression as protected classes. Why is it that those of us who run corporations have seen the light and included this language in our policies against discrimination? Why is it that William &amp; Mary Down the Street has included sexual orientation and gender identity as protected classes against discrimination in its educational and hiring policies? Why is it that Fairfax County Public Schools, a parallel direct example to the WJCC School District, have a broad nondiscrimination policy protecting students and employees on both educational opportunity and employment opportunity that includes sexual orientation? Why is it the Williamsburg James City County Division has not seen that same light? Have we chosen not to? Our schools, what a great place to start, showing our kids from the beginning what equal opportunity and nondiscrimination is all about. I do take comfort, though, in the recent action taken by the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission of last week.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Rhonda Taylor?
My name is Rhonda Taylor. I am a James City County resident. I am a grandmother of three children that are in the James City County School. I had custody of my grandchildren for six years, so I've been through the school system. We have one in high school, excuse me, two in high school, one in elementary school. I'm talking about the bullying policy. My grandchildren were involved in some bullying. To me, the policy needs to be more defined. If there's an incident on the school bus, why are the parents not allowed to see the videos? We were told that it is because of the privacy of the other students, which I understand. But there was an incident where my grandson was found not to be guilty, but yet he was suspended, and after the investigation, we were not even apologized to. It would just kind of slip under the rug. And where do the records, where are the records kept for these investigations? And I feel that it is part of my parenting that I should be allowed to see the, these records, be involved in the investigations. If there's a question, I feel we should, the parents, guardians, whoever, should be allowed to ask questions, to be involved, to want to know what the outcome is, and not, not just, okay, your child has been involved in this, they're suspended, we will let you know what the outcome is. I feel that teachers and a lot of the schools are not involving the parents as much as they should. They're taking more of it upon themselves and not involving the parents, and they should notify the parents when something has happened immediately, not wait until it has gone on and on and on, and then there's no recourse except to suspend the child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Still.
Petra Nadal?
My name is Petra Nadal. I live in Grove, James City County. Just have a real short one here. In reference to the bullying, bullying policy, it seems to me as if you are putting things into law or in the process of trying to do so, and I fear you will be, you will affect the First Amendment rights of our children, our teachers, and everyone involved. The word presumed seems to be showing a little bit too much, and presumed is not a definite line of any kind. There must be a provision that states that it does not apply to expression which protected by the First Amendment. The bullying policy must not prohibit expression of religion, phil-, I can never say, philosophical or political views. Thank you.
Thank you.
Veronica Williams?
My name is Veronica Williams. I'm a practicing attorney in the area, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to address the Chair and the other members of the Board. I would like to address the Board with respect to Proposed Action Items 7.03 and 7.04, specifically the proposed policies to prohibit harassment and retaliation, and the policy regarding sexual harassment and sexual violence. Firstly, I will address 7.03. The approach that is currently before the Board, for consideration, is too broad, does not provide specific protections for constitutionally protected speech, and should provide for the immediate parental notification regarding any student accused of harassment. The approach the Board proposes is one that courts around the nation, to include the Supreme Court, have struck down as being overly broad and as being an infringement on the First Amendment right to free speech. As written, the policy will result in a great deal of constitutionally protected speech being labeled as harassment. A very similar policy was struck down by the Third Circuit Court of Appeals. The court ruled that the policy was unconstitutional because it prohibited a substantial amount of speech that would not constitute actionable harassment under either federal or state law. The case is Sacks v. State College Area School District. For your convenience, I have a copy of that court's ruling for each member of the Board. I would ask the clerk to please provide each Board member with a copy. Thank you. The court has set forth a standard that every school board in the nation should mimic as it promulgates policies. The proposed definition of harassment will invite certain legal challenge and potentially cost the school system thousands of dollars in legal fees. In this regard, it should be deleted and replaced with the language that the Supreme Court and other courts have held to be the permissible test for harassment. Adopting a broader definition of harassment that censors student's speech will expose the school system to legal liability if a student's constitutionally protected speech is punished under an overly broad definition. A concern with regard to each policy referenced is that each policy enumerates specific categories of students to whom harassment is prohibited. I would submit that a better approach, and an approach that will avoid unanticipated consequences, is to protect all students who are harassed. If a student is truly harassed under the court's definition of harassment for any reason or no reason at all, the school system should stop it. In short, mimicking the court's standard would result in striking the right balance for the School Board. The policies would serve to protect every student, not just those who have or are perceived to have certain characteristics, while at the same time protecting the school system from certain liability. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Dawn Alexi?
My name is Dawn Alexi. I live at 15 Enson Spence in the Roberts District. I'm the mother of three James River Elementary Dolphins, and last month I came before you because a wonderful teacher at James River was forced to resign during her probationary period, and it was to the shock of over 600 families who signed a petition to have her reinstated to the Williamsburg James City County School District. At that time, I stated that my concern is a general one, that decisions like this are made secretly and privately, in this case by a new principal, with no opportunity for input from the families that are affected by such decisions. And now I've learned since then that our beloved longtime International Baccalaureate Coordinator has retired with no warning. School begins in seven weeks. The IB program is what makes that school so successful. It's the foundation of the school, and now what? With the new principal, it definitely felt diminished, that program during the school year, there wasn't as much IB attitudes going on and, and talked about and, you know, flashed on the wall, and it just didn't feel like as much of that was going on. But now alarm bells are going off. Our coordinator is, is not going to be there in seven weeks, and now what? So I'm very, very concerned about James River. I've been there for five years. I have four more years. It's, you know, a very special place for my family, and I, I hope, I would like to hear what your plan is for this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the speakers?
Yes.
7.01, non-resident tuition rates fiscal year 2016. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Each year during this time, we bring to you an agenda item to establish the tuition rates for non-residents, and Ms. Berta is here to answer any questions that you might have, but I think it's fairly self-explanatory, a yearly process that we go through to reestablish that budget.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Constantino, this is a process that we go through annually based on our current fiscal year budget to determine what our non-resident tuition would be for students that choose to come to Williamsburg James City County but don't reside in the county. This year, our proposal based on our adopted budget is that the regular ed tuition rate be $9,471, which is a $32 increase or a .34% increase over what the fiscal year 15 rate was. Additionally, the special ed rate would be $17,681 or a $448 increase, a 2.6% increase. And same methodology was used in past years, and just for information, last school year we had one regular ed non-resident student and no special ed. The year before that, the 2013-14 school year, we had one regular ed non-resident student and two special ed, and in the 2012 and 13 school year, we had one regular ed and two special ed students. So just so you can have the trend.
Great, thank you. Any Board member comments? Doesn't sound like it's used that much. Thank you very much, Ms. Berta.
Thank you.
7.02, Bayport Credit Union Contract. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as you know, we started a program at War Hill High School in which we offered credit union services, student-run credit union services with the support of Bayport. In order to expand that program to our high schools, we had to issue an RFP, and this agenda item is asking for your approval of that RFP so that Bayport can expand to Jamestown and Lafayette High School. And, Ms. Berta?
Where'd she go?
Yeah, I was wondering. We'll come back if you have any questions.
Actually, Ms. Mans and I worked hand-in-hand on this, and she's prepared this evening to answer any questions and tell you about the process.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Dr. Constantino, we had the opportunity to work with James City County Purchasing Department, and they established a RFP. They hand-delivered this RFP to many of the banking, financial institutions in the area. We only received one submittal or proposal, which was from Bayport Credit Union. And as was mentioned by Dr. Constantino, War Hill High School had the opportunity to pilot a program last year. It was very successful, and we would like to establish the same program in our other two high schools, where students have the opportunity to actually learn about the financial world and also to be able to apply it. And as a matter of fact, as I was going to say, it's going to be run by students and supervised by a faculty member in each of the high schools.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Dr. Fuentes?
How long is the, the contract for?
For one year.
So each year we got a, we're going to go, I guess, each year, I guess, the program will get evaluated, and then you'll decide to continue on?
Yes, that's true.
And, and I know we probably discussed this last year, so what role does, I know Bayport is holding the monies, but what role do they, you got the teachers, but somehow Bayport must be involved with some of the training?
Yes, they are. They have a person assigned. I believe they're like a youth program coordinator, banking coordinator. They will come in, provide training for the students as well as the faculty member. They'll also provide curriculum resources for the teacher to use as well, and they'll come in and collect the monies that are deposited in our kiosks each at the, at the high schools, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Emanuel?
Do we have a course in banking, or how, how is that working?
Well, we do have the economics and personal finance class.
I see, yeah.
And it's recommended by Bayport Credit Union that students from the business and marketing classes be chosen to actually run the student-led banks.
As one who did, and I, that was a great experience.
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
Do you know what type of hours and when they'll be open and that type of thing?
Yes, it's been suggested that they operate it during lunchtime, during third lunch, and so that will be established at the building level during lunchtime hours.
So only third lunch, or?
Right now, it's being discussed third lunch, but we may have to expand that to other lunch periods.
I don't understand how all the kids would be at the advantage of it if it was third, only third. Am I missing something?
I'm not sure how that will work, but again, it will be up to the building administrators to determine that. But initially in our meeting, it was discussed that we would run it during third lunch.
Any other questions? I have to say, I enjoyed reading these materials and how the, how they set it up. How were the students selected to be the student tellers?
That's something that we're going to determine at the building level as far as student selection. Again, Bayport Credit Union recommends that it would be students in the business and marketing classes.
Right.
We do have work-study programs, so this would be an awesome opportunity for students to be able to gain that experience.
Yeah, I did, I did notice that Bayports will give them marketing materials and that kind of thing, and.
Yes.
I just, great program. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mrs. Mans.
You're welcome.
7.03, Policy JFHA/GBA Prohibition Against Harassment and Retaliation, first reading.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, as you know, for the last several months, the administration has conducted a policy update and review. We're here this evening with several policies associated with J and G policies, and Mrs. Bujhwa is here. To take you through the process, as you know, we rely on VSBA policy processes and also our own attorneys.
And, Ms. Baker?
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Baker's here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Constantino, members of the Board. The first policy being discussed tonight, is it joint policy? The lettering indicates that the policy will apply to both students JFHA and personnel GBA. This is a new policy for students and a revision for personnel. The policy was modeled after the VSBA policy and has been reviewed by the school division's attorney. It will provide a formal complaint procedure to include timelines for the investigation and appeal process. It identifies the compliance officer and the alternate compliance officer. It provides an informal complaint procedure if the complainant and person accused of harassment agree to resolve the complaint informally. It also prohibits retaliation, and it does stipulate annual notice requirements.
Okay. Any Board members have any questions, or?
I have some initial.
Mr. Fuentes?
So are we, I went through most of these, and I, and, okay, so we're, I just want to make sure I understand what we're doing here. So we're taking GBA, right?
Mm-hmm.
We're deleting what we had before, which seemed kind of like, and then we're taking GBA and we're making a JFHA, that's new, and GBA, so GBA is getting replaced with all this?
Correct.
And JFH is new, and it's going to be the same?
Correct.
I understand it.
Correct.
And then what does that mean in parenthetical words, GBA slash JF?
Since it'll be found in both sections, in the section G, the GBA becomes first. So in the personnel section, it'll say GBA slash JFHA. In the student section, it'll say it, and it'll have the J, lettering first.
Okay, so that's. Okay, so that's, we're using the verbal to represent that it's both ways?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's all my questions for right now.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Oh, I have a number of different concerns. Certainly, first of all, would be the fact that we are quantifying things that are not quantified by law and it is a very, very broad definition. I also, in looking at the actual complaint procedure policy, I see that there is, you know, certainly an indication of something that would be done with regard to false charges. But my concern is what happens if someone is accused, it's found unfounded? Do they have the right to expunge their record?
You asked if it was quantified by law and Mr. Lacy is here this evening to be able to answer those questions for us as completely as
Well, I do have a copy of Virginia Code, so unless something's changed, has it changed? Let's have Mr. Lacy. Okay, I just was interested in knowing if there'd been a change this year because I was looking particularly at a couple of the laws that were passed in the last couple of years.
Mr. Lacy, can you, since you've made the trip from Richmond, you might as well make the trip to advise.
The General Assembly and the Senate of Wisconsin is always changing things and not knowing what you're referring to.
I do have the code numbers if you need them.
I don't, I don't need the code numbers because as you well know, a lot of the things that are prohibited are prohibited by federal law. You know, so what the Virginia General Assembly does is probably neither here nor there when it comes to the federal law. Sometimes they, they have a statute that comports with the federal law, sometimes they are silent, so.
You're not going to like that I say this every meeting. It's really hard for people, both my parents have hearing loss, so I'm very sensitive to people not speaking loudly enough. So if you could please speak loudly enough for both the microphone and people, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, all right, we'll try.
Oh, well, I know that there was an anti-bullying law that was patroned by Delegate McGlellan and supported by a diversity of organizations and they're pretty clear about what that is. And in those bullying laws, there is a protection for First Amendment rights. Such policies and procedures shall not be interpreted to infringe upon the First Amendment rights of students and not intended to prohibit expression of religious, philosophical, or political views. I think also even just some of the harassment that's dealt, is there a legal definition of flirting?
Of what, of flirting?
Flirting, yeah, because I mean, unwanted verbal, I mean, it's kind of hard, that's a kind of broad one. I mean, it seems as if it's written really broadly in a lot of different ways. I know we have the Civil Rights Act, that is race, color, religion, national origin, or sex. I know that we have the age discrimination, which is 40 or over. I know that we have the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Genetic Information Non-Discrimination Act. Even the VSBA, the policy is suggesting ancestry, marital status, you know, I just think that we're reaching and I'm not, not happy with that reach.
And what part do you think is reaching?
Well, okay.
Because you mentioned a number of acts there. Obviously ancestry is not one that you would see readily defined there, but I sort of view ancestry as another way to say natural origin or that sort of thing, race. I mean, it's ancestry. Now, quite frankly, there is not a law, federal state law, that talks about ancestry. Now, but other than ancestry, what do you think is reaching?
Well, I guess I particularly have, you know, the, some of this is embedded in this one and some of this is embedded in the next one. And between the alphabet soup of all the policies, it can be, it can be confusing. But particularly, I think the phrase that said, "Or based on a belief that such characteristic exists at school or any school-sponsored activity."
That's a little awkward. I think the intent there is that if the, if a person, whether it be a student or an employee or visitor to the school perceives an individual to be, let's say, perceives them to be of a different race, they may not be, but maybe they look like they're a different race. And so this person perceives it and then says something racial, like, you know, and not realizing that maybe they're, they're black when they think they're white. Okay? So it's a perception thing. If you, if you say something to somebody with the intent of hurting them and interrupting the educational program because you perceive them to be something.
But how does that fall under the definition of making it impossible to learn at school? I mean, it's a pretty, it's a pretty specific definition and what I
Well, look, 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 look. You know, you asked about, you know, for instance, flirting. If you've ever been the victim of sexual harassment, you wouldn't ask that question. Okay? And how does it hurt? Let's say that they, they use the N-word, okay? Let's say they use the N-word and that causes a child to get upset, to shut down, that hurts their education. I don't think there's anybody in the world that would dispute that. Do you agree with that?
I think it's very dangerous to
Well, do you agree with that?
No, I do not. I think that there's a lot of cruelty that exists at school that's difficult to define. And I also think that, I think that when you get into the mind of the harasser, you should be dealing with the behavior and not the perception. And I think it's, I think it's very, very broad. I think we have a lot of problems defining it.
Well, I just gave you an example where somebody who obviously thought
Can you cite me a court case where that's been a problem?
A court case where that has been a problem? No, I cannot, right standing right here.
So why, so I guess one of the things that I, that came to mind as I was studying over this is that the General Assembly got all wrapped around the axle about the Rolling Stones article. And it really jumped ahead of the train. And I'm concerned, obviously, it's not the same, we're not talking about a Rolling Stones article. I'm, I'm very concerned that we are delving into new ground and new areas that have not been quantified by law, that there is not settled court case on. Why would we want to do that?
Well, let me ask you something. A presenter up here said, "Why don't we delete all the references to sex, gender, race, color, and just put harassment?" Okay? Would you agree with that? Would you agree with that?
I certainly agree. I certainly agree that we should not have harassment.
Okay. And so
That would be, I think, something we'd all agree on.
And the premise of this policy is harassment. Okay? The premise of this policy is harassment. Now, if you don't like, and I'm not putting this, but if one doesn't like specifying sex or race, or color, or national origin, and would just as soon have harassment down there, then I imagine that could be accommodated. But I got to tell you, that would fly in the face of the point you're trying to make because that would be open-ended. There was, there was a discussion about this case, the Sacks case, okay? That had an open-ended provision in it. That's why it was struck down. It had like race and sex and then it had any other characteristic. That's why it was struck down. There was a later Fifth Circuit case that had a different policy that was upheld. Okay? So, you know, we, you can't say, "The Sacks case is not this policy. The Sacks case is not this policy." But what I'm, what I'm asking is this, can, can this policy be improved? I imagine it can be. But the question is, which, which one of these bases upon which somebody's being harassed do we not agree with? Do we, don't agree with sex?
No, that's not the question.
Well, no, you, no, you were asking, where is these things protected? Sex is protected. Gender is a subspecies of sex. I've been involved in many a court case.
It's not under law. It's not quantified law.
Okay. I'm the one with the attorney, you know, LLB. I've been in federal court where the courts have specifically held that it is covered under sex, under Title VII. Because it was a case involving discrimination against a male because he was perceived as being, or he was homosexual.
Well, I don't want to, I don't
So, so, so gender is covered. You don't, you don't have to agree with me, I'm just saying it is.
Gender identity is not covered.
No, I didn't say gender identity, I said gender.
Okay.
Okay, now, race. Race is covered.
Yep.
Color is covered.
I agree with that.
Okay, national origin is covered. Disability is covered.
Yes.
Religion, you certainly agree with that. That's not in the law. That's not in the law.
Can you help me understand why you would say I would certainly agree with that?
Well, because it's in the law. You said it's
But why me? Why would I certainly?
Oh, because you're the one, I didn't mean you. One would agree with that, okay? But religion, religion is not one of the areas that's protected in any of the statutes, federal, state statutes. But I think that would be something that would be appropriate for the board to put in. Right?
I guess my area of disagreement with you is that I believe that a belief or a characteristic that a belief exists, to me, sounds very broad. And I think it is similar in the case law reading that I have done. I don't, I personally don't want this to be the Pat and Heather show. I'm not, I'm not trying to make
Oh, I understand that. And we're friends, for people don't know, we're actually friends.
But I have to say that I'm very surprised because every time I've heard you speak and every time I've heard you present, you have been very specific. And I'm not seeing this in this. And so I also have never heard you use words like "I feel" or "I think." I have always heard you reference the law. And so I, I don't want to do anything because I feel it or I believe it. I want to do it because it, I am told that that is what the law requires me to do. And of course, I want there to be a place that we have that people live, I'm sorry, people go to school and work and they feel safe to be there. But I don't think that this definition does that without severely restricting other things.
Well, the law protects, everything that's in this policy. Sex, gender, you may disagree, one may disagree about gender, but I tell you right now, I've been involved in too many lawsuits dealing with gender. Now, this doesn't say gender identification. We're not getting into that, into that area. But gender, which has become synonymous, I don't agree with it. I argued in federal court and I didn't win. The gender is not synonymous with sex, but the courts have sort of treated gender as being synonymous with sex. Race, color, national origin, disability, religion, age. Now, don't forget, this is also a personnel policy, okay? So you're going to see some things in here that would apply to personnel that obviously wouldn't apply to your students, like marital status. Well, that's, that may not be true. I've represented, I've represented Justice Powell when he was a justice on the Supreme Court, had been sued because of having been on the State Board of Education when they did not allow women who were pregnant to continue teaching beyond
Well, I believe I saw that one of my other colleagues signaled, and I will say this, I would be content if the policy stopped at what was protected by law and if First Amendment constitutional rights were included in that policy.
I have no problem with that. I think, I agree with that.
I could possibly live with that.
I agree with that. That's from the bullying statute, right? That's fine, because I don't think it's the intent of the policy. In fact, it might be, there are probably some other improvements that could be made. I don't think it's, you know, I think it would get, let me just say this to you. I don't think the board wants to strike everything and just go with harassment because that is really opening up Pandora's box.
It suggests that they would.
You know, because then you wouldn't have any, you know, it was just harassment. And then it could be on anything, like you got acne, you know, or something like that. But I don't have any problem. The only, the only thing that you would drop from this list, you know, candidly, would be ancestry. I think you can find a state of federal law that prohibits discrimination on the basis of all these things except ancestry.
It's the belief that such characteristics is, that has to go.
Okay, that's the next one, based on the belief.
That has to go.
On the perception by the person doing the harassing. And it can be clarified, if it were clarified to say, based upon the perception by the alleged, no, you know?
Nope. Law. What the law says and, and stop there. I don't want to have anything in there about belief or characteristic or perception. We're getting into the mind of the harasser. That is not our job. Our job is to deal with the action regardless of why it is motivated. It doesn't matter if I'm mean, it doesn't matter if I hate a certain race, it doesn't matter any of those things. It matters that I'm stopped, not why I'm doing it.
Okay. Well, the reason I think it's there is this. You couldn't obviously accuse somebody of harassing on the basis of race who didn't perceive somebody, I mean, the example I gave, the example
There's my point. That's my point. That's exactly it.
No, it didn't, because you didn't let me finish.
I'm sorry. My husband said the same thing.
That's okay. We've had some very spirited discussions, by the way, in private. We enjoy having these discussions and usually I lose, as I am this evening. But if, if a person were to call another, use the N-word with regard to an employee and you say to him, "Why would you do that? Well, because he is or she is black." You don't have to worry about getting into their minds because they, you know, they've told you. You don't have to guess at it. And what I guess I'm saying to you is, if that, if those are the facts, do we say, "We're not going to do anything to you because the person is actually white and then that black," or do we say, "That is not the attitude that we want in our workforce or in our student body"? Now, could this wording be improved? Yes. And could, could we put in the First Amendment stuff? Absolutely. I will see that as, that's going to be in the bullying policy. In a way, there's an overlap here between harassment and bullying when it comes to students. I think we all recognize that. And, and, you know, frankly, the bullying policy is probably going to take over this policy to a large extent. Because the bullying policy doesn't say on the basis of this, or that, or what have you. It could be on the, on the basis of, you know, I hate to say this, but acne. I mean, a lot of the bullying that happens is because of, you know, the way the person presents themselves and they just are picked on, picked on, picked on, which we all know. So I have, I think, I think we ought to add, we hadn't added the First Amendment. And I can come up with some language that maybe improves this characteristic thing.
How about coming up with language that drops this characteristic thing?
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll think about that. Well, it's up to y'all now. Let me, let me say this to you, this is your policy. And I think a dialogue about the policy is extremely important. And I think this is exactly what the board should be doing. I am so opposed to school boards adopting policies without actually reading them and picking them apart and saying, "Is this the appropriate policy for us?" So the very, the initial question is, is this the appropriate policy? This, the tone of the policy is, is appropriate policy for Williamsburg, James City County schools? And then, once you determine that it is, then you, then the question is, is the actual wording of the policy appropriate or do we want to change? You have pointed out, made some, you know, points that I think are really worthy of, and I say this sincerely, worthy of consideration and amending the policy to accommodate those points. But I think that's a function of this board. I think what you have done is precisely the function of this board. And, and so I applaud you and I applaud the board for doing this. There's no magic in this policy. You know, we've, we've sort of lived without it. We can, you know, but it is, it is a nice thing to say, to send the message, you know, we don't want people bullied, we don't want them harassed, which is a form of bullying.
Did you have all your questions answered?
Just one thing, Sacks is still good law. Sacks still stands. It has not been eliminated.
For the policy that was in Sacks, which is markedly different than this policy.
I'd be very interested to see a written response on how it's markedly different, if that's a possibility.
Sure.
Okay.
Mrs. Larson?
Have you crafted other policies for other school divisions in Virginia along these same lines? And what type, can you, what type of language do you have in those?
I, I have crafted a number of sexual harassment policies that have then been converted to, to just harassment policies. I didn't convert them, but they were converted. But as far as this policy, you know, so that everybody knows, we don't draft, I don't draft the VSBA policy.
Right.
And I was not personally the one that reviewed this one. I'm sort of pinch ending here. But I have, I have dealt with But I have, I have dealt with sexual harassment specifically, and it's not a quantum leap to go from sexual harassment to racial harassment and that kind of thing. It's a form of discrimination. Harassment is a form of discrimination. And, and we're required by federal law to have, to actually have policies and grievance procedures to deal with discrimination under Title VI, Title IX, or inverse and asunder other, other statutes. But I have, and I'd be happy to take a look at those in relation to this, if that was the nature of your question.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook?
I have two questions. The first has to do with the language that Mrs. Cortes, when you talked about with the "based on the belief that such a character exists." I too struggled with that language, not, not its existence, but understanding it. And staff did a good job helping me understand it. But I'm not willing to, I'd like to see another shot at wording that in the way that-
I agree with you. I, I know what is intended. I'm not so sure the language conveys what was intended. And, and it really is, is addressed to the alleged harasser and what that person's perception is.
So yeah, so I would appreciate another shot at that wording. And then also, one of the things I'd like to just sort of point out to my colleagues-
And also, by the way, when I do that, I will also consider whether it really does great balance to the policy to drop it altogether. Okay?
Thank you. One of the things that staff explained in the policy committee meeting was the "based on the preponderance of the evidence standard." And so if you could just, I think the colleagues, my colleagues would like to hear about that.
Well-
Is that in here? Where is that?
They're not designated, so, you have to talk about that maybe too.
Well, this, this is where I can say with, instead of saying, "I believe," and what have you, I can tell you, there are three, there are three basic, and there's some deviations from this, but three basic standards of proof. One is preponderance of the evidence. And if you imagine a scale that's, you know, they're equal, and if the proof weighs the scale down on one side or the other, whatever side is down is the preponderance, okay? And that's the normal standard in civil matters, preponderance of the evidence. Then you have clear and convincing, which is another standard. And that standard is usually used in licensing type of things where people's licenses are at stake and things like child abuse and neglect and things where people are going to be put on the registry and flogged, publicly flogged. And then the one that we all hear because we watch these lawyer shows that have no resemblance to, to what goes on in the real world is beyond a reasonable doubt. And, and I cannot give you a legal definition. I'm not a criminal lawyer, but beyond a reasonable doubt is the highest standard, to the best of my knowledge, that you can have, which means that you don't harbor a reasonable doubt. Now, that is what it says. And so when the jury gets the, gets the case, if the jury says, "Well, you know, I'm not so sure she's guilty," then that's all it takes is a reasonable doubt and then they vote to say not guilty. So this, if that standard's in here, and I must confess to you that I don't recall whether it is or not, but assuming it is in here, a preponderance of the, of the evidence, preponderance of whatever it says, that is the customary, the customary standard that is used throughout the school system for everything, okay? We don't use any of these elevated standards. And actually, to be frank with you, I would prefer to get away from all this legalese anyway. I think that we have, we have gone overboard, not necessarily with this policy, but gone overboard with legalese.
Okay. Mr. Fuentes?
Could I just ask the name of the city? Virginia Beach has a policy. Could you take a look at that?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, Matty, I'll take a look at several of them. It's, it's something I do when I draft policy, is I go around and I look at various and sundry other school systems to see what they've done. Some, you know, nobody has the corner on drafting these things.
Right.
And so I generally take a look and I like to see what other people have done because I can learn from that as well. Believe it or not, at my advanced age, I still learn a few things.
Mr. Fuentes?
So let me make sure I understand. So I don't know what the board's will is going to be on this as far as going-
Joe, I had a, again, it's hard to hear you.
Oh. Are you okay with me now? Am I speaking okay?
Yes, you're much better. It's just hard, I think, because the room isn't very-
I thought we fixed that.
We should maybe wear the-
Thought about fixing it.
Not a bad idea. Not a bad idea at all.
It was an idea.
Okay. So, so let me make sure, I don't know what the will of the board is going to be on this as far as where we are. So I don't know what you're going back to look at or whether we're all going to agree to go back or whether we're going to accept it the way it is. There is one thing that this first sentence had me, I guess I got all hung up on, because when they started talking about "based on the belief that such characteristics exist," I think grammatically, since we're fighting over this one sentence on the, in the second paragraph, right? That's where we were?
First paragraph.
Oh, yes. Well, first paragraph.
Based on, it's the second.
Actually, I'm gonna-
Oh, wait a minute. It actually shows up twice.
I'm going to help you out, okay?
It shows up twice.
I think this is the one, I think this is one, excuse me, Joe, if you would.
Sure.
I think I've talked to the people that I have to talk to, and we're going to strike actually that sentence in its entirety.
Which one?
That sentence that you're referring to.
It is a violation of this policy for any student, yada, yada, yada?
Yeah. It's redundant. If you take a look at the first paragraph, it's redundant.
Where are you reading from, Joe?
Oh, okay. No, I was reading, okay, so I get it. So there's the, I was looking at the top of the second paragraph-
You all see?
And the top of the fourth paragraph, because grammatically, grammatically, it's all whacked up.
Yeah. So that's, so instead of saying, "And we mean it," we're just going to strike it.
It's really hard when you two are talking, I'm sorry.
You're right, you're right.
And then you're saying we can't hear, it's just really, I'm sorry.
Have you, have you got it? Has everybody got it?
No, I didn't get it. Sorry.
What I think we were going to propose is that in light of the overlap between the first paragraph and the second paragraph, we were going to strike the first sentence of the second paragraph.
Yeah, it's redundant.
Okay?
So up to the word "further" is stricken? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's going to take care of a lot of your angst, I think.
It will take care of some of my angst, that is true.
Up to the where?
Further. We're going to strike all the way to "further" and combine the two paragraphs.
So you're, okay.
Y'all okay with that, right?
And, and then-
Well, even if you're not, we're doing it.
Okay, so my problem with that first sentence that you just dropped on that paragraph, if you go down to the fourth paragraph, "The school division shall promptly investigate, yada, yada, yada," and then "based on the belief that such characteristics exist,"
And we're, and we're going to revisit that. We were asked-
Let me tell you what, let me tell you what my issue is. I'm not, the grammatical part of it. The part where it says "at school" or "any school sponsored activity."
I know. It's a hanging, it hangs out there.
That phrase, that phrase, it, what's the word that you lawyers use?
It's a dangling.
Dangling.
Hangar disciple.
It's something, it's-
The operative, the operative words that it refers to. Yeah, your lawyers don't use that. At, that "at school" part, though, I want to make sure, though, that it's, because when I read it, I was getting confused with "the characteristic exists at school."
I know. Yes.
Right.
I got it. Well, and furthermore, what happens is that when you combine the students with the employees, it gets a little more awkward because our authority, the school board's authority exists not only at school and on school property, but also at school-sponsored events and going to and from school. And I don't know, once you marry these two policies up, it's going to get a little awkward. But I had, I had identified that as being an awkward phrase, and so we're going to take care of that.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, you know, there was a lot of discussion on free speech, so I'm trying to understand where the free speech issue comes up and would free speech already be covered by other policies that we have? I mean, or am I wrong?
There is a, let me answer you in this, in this fashion. There is a sentence that appears in the bullying policy that references free speech. And what we're suggesting is that we will take that sentence and put it in this policy as well, because there's never the intent of, I don't think it's intent of the board to anyway restrict free speech, okay?
Right.
So we put it in there because it doesn't do any harm to this policy, it just states the obvious. And, and where would it go? It would, it would probably go, probably somewhere after the second paragraph. I mean, I'll put it in an appropriate place, up front, so there won't be any, any question about it. Yes?
Joe, if you, if you want to know what it says, it says, "Such policies and procedures should not be interpreted to infringe upon the First Amendment rights of students and are not intended to prohibit expression of religious, philosophical, or political views, provided that such expression does not cause an actual material disruption of the work of the school."
So, anyway, so is that, well, anyway, I don't know what else, other changes we're talking about, but you're going, I don't know whether the whole board is, I don't know where we're going with it, but-
Well, I think where I'm going with it is, I'm listening to the board and I'm reacting to the board and I'll visit the policy and see how I can improve it to accommodate the concerns of the board members. I've heard one about, about the religious part and the other things. I've heard other about seeing what Virginia Beach, and other school systems, not to single out Virginia Beach. I had already identified the dangling, whatever the thing is, which I agree with you, is was troublesome to me because I said, mm, it's just sort of, so we'll take care of that.
Joe, you good?
Yeah, I just, I just, well, and it may mean that we might have to, like, have another discussion on it, if it's going to be a major rewrite. I'm, to be honest, I, I don't have a lot of heartache with this, myself personally, with this procedure as written. I mean, like you said, there's always room for improvement. And that, what you referred to as a dangling phrase definitely needed to be fixed because that really was-
Yeah.
I was losing sleep over that.
I think, I think I mentioned it. Well, I wish you wouldn't lose sleep. All you have to do is pick up the phone. But in any event, it bothered me too, because I'm kind of a stickler for that kind of thing.
I don't want to start all over either, though.
Oh, no.
You know what I'm saying? I think the changes should be-
I have not heard any direction from any board member, so I'm going to say it now because if I'm wrong, of any wholesale rewrite of this. I've heard specific concerns that I, number one, have taken care of part of it and willing to take a look to see how we can deal with some of the others.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the discussion of the board members concerning this particular policy. I've been rather quiet, listening to everybody's discussion, but I certainly don't want a total rewrite, but I think addressing the questions, the concerns that were brought is the place to begin. The, the other thing is, in terms of, on Roman numeral 2A.1, it's a minor thing, it should be noticed. There's no D at the end of it. And the other thing is-
Now, where, where'd you, wait a minute, you're going to, where are you?
Complaint procedure.
Yes.
Formal procedure, file report, 2A.1, that paragraph, any student or personnel, this is in policy. I hope I'm on the same policy.
Yeah, you're on the right one. Keep going, keep going.
At the bottom, the last line, it says, "Student personnel has noticed," it should be noticed, all right? Past tense. The, it's a minor thing, but I figure I want to just demonstrate that I read the document. The other thing is that on, on two investigation, no, on three, where it says "action by superintendent," there is a footnote, number one, and I don't know what the footnote goes to.
The footnote number one.
Yeah, there's a number one following perpetrator.
No, that footnote, I think, came directly from a-
Oh, I didn't have that on my thing.
Well, this is the BSBA policy.
And that's, and that's, so it's not intended to be there, right?
Correct.
Right, so that footnote needs to be deleted. The footnote number needs to be deleted.
Correct.
I mean, did they collapse this one here on harassment?
At least as far as I'm concerned, I-
They did. Okay. I tell you, I'm consulting here with the brain trust, okay? And I don't know, unless you have some real heartburn, I'm probably going to break out these two policies, okay?
That's what makes sense to me.
Otherwise, it's a lot of awkward, and stuff that doesn't apply to one applies to the other and stuff. And, and, I haven't told them this, but I think we're going to take a look and see whether we can take the sexual, the existing sexual harassment policy and modify it just to take care, instead of having a policy on sexual harassment, which we have, right?
We have that, yes.
And one on just harassment, why don't we just go ahead and, and we'll mold the two of those together. So, but the thrust of the policies will remain the same.
That sounds like a plan.
Is that a plan?
With, with the changes that we discussed?
With the First Amendment change that we discussed and with the striking of the sentence and looking at the characteristic and looking at the policies from the other school divisions, yes.
Okay, so not necessarily including any characteristics that are not currently protected by law?
We're taking a look at that.
Okay, that would be important. So, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because so if you're thinking about doing that, then some of the discussion that we have to have about the sexual harassment, we might not have to have because we're, are we, are we still going to go through that? Because I have a couple of questions that would sort of apply to both.
I think we probably should go through that just to-
Okay.
Make sure that we can do that.
My concern is, in both of these policies, it was brought up even this evening by somebody, if, if somebody is falsely accused, it determines, determined to be unfounded, do they have an opportunity to expunge the charges? Because I think that is wrong for them to not have that opportunity.
Well, yeah, I don't have that policy in front of me. And most policies, and I assume this one does, require that a report of the investigation go to both parties.
It's also in this one.
The sexual harassment?
Yeah.
No, the harassment.
The one that we're just talking, it's also in this one.
Okay, awesome.
In other words, there's a punishment for somebody who falsely accuses, but there's not remediation for someone who's been falsely accused.
What we normally do, just so you know, and we can put this in the policy, what we normally do is that when there's been a substantial allegation or an allegation of substantial misconduct and has turned out that there's insufficient evidence, and normally in these things, there's a he said, she said type of proposition. I see no problem with taking, with not putting it in the person's personnel file, but normally what we do is put it in a separate file, because if we get a repeat number of these things, then, you know, the old adage where the smoke, there's fire, we might want to take a little harder look. I mean, and, but it has the same effect as far as not being in the, in the person's direct file, but it would be kept just for, you know, for future reference. It is an artifact. And frankly, the, the State Library Board has regulations that I don't think allows us necessarily to deep-six it permanently or throw it off the bridge or whatever, whatever they did with these things.
Can you give me clarification on that? Because I guess my mind is devious enough to say that someone could develop a period of accusation that, that might really make life difficult in, in sort of a reverse harassment. I mean, I, I did do a little bit of reading about that.
Well, in that, in that particular case, that would be one that would probably result in the, the person making the allegations getting a very substantial disciplinary action up to, including dismissal. So, you know, we got somebody who's repeatedly harassed and going the other way by filing complaints, then we need to take care of that person. So that, that's the way that's taken care of. I was talking about the one, because a lot of these, we frankly end up saying, "We can't tell whether it happened." We're not saying it didn't happen, we're not saying it did happen, we can't tell. Okay? We're not saying it didn't happen, we're not saying it did happen, we can't tell, okay? And all I'm saying is that, is that absent this extraordinary situation where the same person is beating on them, if something occurs from another individual, another individual, another individual, that doesn't appear to be related, you know, then, then, you know, we might want to take a little different look and see what the problem may be. Does that help you out?
It does, it does. Well, and the only other thing I would say as far as looking at that policy is that I don't really want to be looking at motive, I, that's not what I want to delve into. I want to look at the action of dealing with what has happened, not necessarily motive. And I really want to make sure, as far as the, as far as someone being accused, that we're not doing anything that would violate FERPA. I want to make sure that, you know, no one in any way is jeopardized. And I guess it's been really heavily on my mind because of all the, the data leakage that's just been going on in all levels of government, and I just think it's, it's really concerning, that's all.
Yeah, I will say this to the board. We don't want to jettison motive slash intent in policies. We don't want to jettison. And let me give you a prime example. A young person brings a weapon on a school premises, maybe it's a knife beyond the three inches or what have you, and says, you know, "I really didn't mean to bring it, I was out with my dad or whomever, and it was in my book bag because I spent the weekend with my dad." And, you know, this is real life stuff. I mean, we hit this time and time again, and we decide that we believe the kid, okay? So, we're not going to do something arbitrary, like, say, well, you brought it, I don't care whether you intended to bring it or not. So, intent does play a role, a very substantial role in the disciplinary process.
I might argue that that is within the scope of the person making the decision, it does not have to be quantified in the policy. And I, and I really think that, I mean, just purely pulling my parenting hat, my mother always said, never ask a child why they did something, just deal with what it was they did. And I don't think that motive is something that we really want to get into because it's a, whatever it is, it's a violation, it's a crime, we deal with it. We don't deal with their motive.
Well, I hear you. I mean, I...
So, I would really like to see some of that reflected as well.
You're done, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not calling you again. Are all the board members...
So, we're just, we're just going to send it back?
It's coming back.
I'm going to kind of try to review that and see if anybody's shaking their head.
And the four things that you mentioned, basically, that were...
Joe, I've lost count, but it's a number of things we're doing, yes.
So, Pat, just one more thing, now that I have my shot here. One of the, one of the word lines in here is, "Are any other characteristic protected by law?" So, where we had the speaker tonight talking about sexual orientation, it's, that's kind of the catch-all for whatever else is protected by...
No, actually, I don't, I really think the thrust of those comments, and I hate to put myself in the place of them, is, is that the, the thing that made the policy bad in the Saks case was that very thing, that it was open-ended.
Right.
Because it actually said, "Any characteristic," you know?
Yeah.
And I think that's the problem, is that we don't want to say any characteristic, it would have to be, would have to be further defined than that because we have to be fair. We have to put people on notice of what is prohibited.
What is and what's not prohibited, right.
Yeah, what we are prohibiting, I feel very strongly about that with regard to youngsters. And that's the reason why I have, I'm on a personal crusade on the Code of Student Conduct to try to eliminate, to the extent possible, legal jargon, or at least stated in, in words that are understandable by, by my grandchildren, for instance. Who, by the way, is smarter than I am, so they can probably...
We have no doubt about that.
Yeah, there's no question about that. I've got a five-year-old that's just, well, wiping me up.
The other thing, too, that, the base on a belief that that has, everyone who has read that has come away confused.
I understand. And that's, that's one of the things, that's, that's the sentence, that is the sentence that we're taking a look at.
Right. And I think also there's, there's some distinction between students and personnel, that those rules are enough different that they probably should have separate...
We are, we're doing that.
Right, I understand that, I understand that. I'm just kind of trying to review what we are, what we're going to do here. So, we're going to separate those two policies to have different rules for students and personnel. We're going to put in protections for First Amendment speech, for speech protected by First Amendment.
The code.
Code, okay.
It's going to be modified because the way the code is written...
Yeah, so I think...
You can't just pluck it in there.
I think we're going to have to pull this from our next meeting agenda and have another, another first reading again of this because I think that there's enough, enough thought that has to be put in there. And, you know, the expungement thing, for employees, particularly for sexual harassment, I don't think you can expunge it. I think it has to be there by law, but that's just the way I've been trained through the years.
Actually, what a lot of people don't realize is that the State Library Board has some detailed regulations that we have to follow with regard to what we have to maintain and how long we have to maintain it. So, we just can't go out and start destroying stuff willy-nilly. Or we could, but we'd be in violation of the law.
Right.
So, I think, I think we understand where we're going. On GFHA, GVA, and whatever other As there are.
I understand.
You can just take any letters you want because we have a lot of them.
I can't stand this lettering system.
Me either. It's very confusing and you get, and you get all wrapped around the letters and, you know, I guess the final thing I'll say, and I promise the final thing I'll say...
I'm going to hold you to this now.
Well, okay.
On this policy.
Thank you. I think motive as a mitigating factor is, is fine, but I think if you use it as a trigger for inquiry, that's where I have my problem. So, if you can reflect that at all in the language, I would appreciate it.
Okay, okay, somebody make it know this stuff because my memory's like a sieve.
That's what we have Janet for.
I think Janet will take care of it.
We're wishing her luck in all this.
And we're on tape.
Well, I know, I know we have Mr. Fluentes, and he's got a, you know, iron mind and iron memory, so...
So, if you don't mind, because I'm getting lost on this, I want to make sure, because I don't want to, I don't like reliving battles. So, we're separating student and personnel, right? And Mr. Zerza, you can agree with, we're going to fix dangling sentences?
Yes.
Right? We're adding the First Amendment speech clause?
Right.
You're checking with other neighboring schools to see if there's any other, maybe slight improvements?
If there's a better mousetrap.
Right. And then we're going to fix the footnote numbers and the grammatical mistakes.
Sure. I don't know about the footnote numbers, but the grammatical mistakes would...
There's a hanging footnote.
There's a hanging footnote.
Yeah, that needs to be clipped. So...
All right.
Is that, was that hang?
Yep, I'm good with all that, yep.
All right. Okay, so we're all...
I don't know if I'd go very far if I were you, Mr. Lacy.
Why is that?
Sexual harassment, no.
Ruth?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to understand the procedure. So, is this the first time Mr. Lacy has gotten involved in this process, or, so it goes from policy committee? What's, what's the process here?
Now, Stephanie went, it went to...
Somebody in my office.
Somebody in his office. Then it came to the policy committee, and then it comes to us. And then...
The attorney before it comes to the policy committee.
Right, it was the attorney before the policy committee.
So, they had, they had seen this?
And I expressed my concerns in every single one of those times, just so you know.
Well, but I doubt that. I think it's a, because we're not all probably always going to agree on policy language, and it can't always go one way or another, so that's what we have to compromise and find the right language that works.
If we accommodate everybody's concern, that's the best way to go.
Joe?
So, as Mr., going along with what you just said, Ms. Larson, as Mr. Lacy has told me repeatedly, when those policies go up there, he's just looking to make sure we don't get in legal trouble. He's not trying to push his will on the board of what the policy says. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, you are.
You're just looking at it, is this, if we are doing something illegal?
Yeah, illegal, immoral, or felony.
Right, but you don't look at it as, is this the right thing for the division or not?
I mean, philosophical, philosophical, right.
I mean, there was lots of discussion on those words and with the attorney and back and forth, back and forth. I'm sure Mrs. Bujhawat can agree with that. So, you know, we got their thoughts on that. Ms. Cope?
And, Mrs. Larson, just to be clear to the rest of the board, Mrs. Cordasco and I are not, don't perceive ourselves as making decisions on behalf of the board, so we're sort of reviewing and screening all of the discussions that we had here today, had previously. So, yeah, so we're not altering anything before it gets here, if that makes any sense.
Well, okay, let me add my footnote to what I just said. My point with all that was is just because they reviewed it and he says that it's legal, doesn't mean that we can't change it.
Right, exactly.
That's what, I guess, what I was trying to say is...
He gives advice at the end of the day. We can take it or not.
Right.
Right.
And I apologize because I think that you asked this, but I, I don't, I didn't, there was so much back and forth, and I know that you just did, but, and I know this, this discussion has come up before about NATO, oh, boy, about the sexual orientation, right? This is at the...
Well, sexual orientation...
Not, what's, a speaker brought it up this evening about something that wasn't in, that was...
Transgender.
No, not transgender.
Gender, gender identity?
Yes, and I mean, you, that's come up a lot, we've been asked that before, and you've not wanted to, or you've said it's covered, and so I apologize. Could you just repeat that again because there was so much language going back and forth?
With regard to gender identity?
Yes.
There's a very heated debate over whether gender identity is, is a form of sex discrimination or not. The federal government takes the position that it is, and there have been court decisions that interpreting, more court decisions interpreting state law saying it is, but there's no definitive court decision out there. The only thing we can say with some degree of confidence is that if you, if you adopt certain policies, we can fairly well predict that the federal government may come down and investigate or sue you, but that doesn't mean that the federal government is correct. That just means what they will do. So, at this juncture of the ballgame, unless there's, somebody feels a real strong urge to get into the gender identities game, I just suggest you stay out of it.
Okay, but it's been brought forward before, that's why I wanted to have, for an explanation. Somebody brought it forward to us a couple of years ago as well, so...
Well, you know, the greatest publicity we get is the, is the use of bathrooms by students that biologically are one sex and want to use the bathroom of another sex, biological sex. And, and that seems to be the hot button issue. So, unless you are willing to get into that debate, you probably need to stay out of the debate totally. Does that help? Does that help?
Oh, yes, thank you. Yeah, I just don't want to get lost in all of this language, the fact that we don't want our students or our staff harassed, or, you know, or in any way feel uncomfortable or sexually violated. I mean, while we're sitting here and we're, this is very important work, I think that that, you know, we're doing it in order to protect the people that work for us and the students that come to us every day. And so, once we get it nailed down...
Okay. Okay, we finish with that one, we can move on to 7.04, policy JBCC, GBCC, sexual harassment, sexual violence.
This is currently a policy that we have in place. It is a joint policy, but this is a revision for both students and personnel. Again, it has been reviewed with our school division attorney, and it allows to, it defines sexual harassment, it identifies the responsibilities of the Title IX coordinator, it provides a formal complaint procedure to include timelines, it also allows the complainant and the accused the opportunity to meet with the Title IX coordinator designee separately, and it also prohibits retaliation.
Yeah, so now are we going to do the same thing with this one that we did with harassment and just separate those into students and employees?
Before we have this discussion, can I just say that we hold off for a minute for Ms. Larson to come back so that she's part of this, since it's, if we can just wait a couple of minutes?
We can look at that. We can look at that.
I thought I heard you say that maybe you were going to put this in, did I hear that?
That's why I want to make sure everyone's here for this discussion. I'm asking the chair, the chair, if you're okay with that?
Sure, it's fine.
You know...
So, Stephanie, are we going to separate those two, or...
We can look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now that, Pat, was that the direction that we thought we were headed?
Yeah, so we can have just a student policy in...
Right.
It's too confusing, it's too confusing to have that together.
I'm too simple-minded, I have to...
We can do that.
Does anyone have any comments on the policy as presented, on the sexual harassment policy?
Mr. Fluentes? Yes, so let me ask you, normally, on most of these, you reference where, well, in most cases, when there's major changes lately, we've been using the VSBA as the template to at least get started. So, in this case, what was the basis for this change?
Yes, thank you.
For this one?
This one was actually the policy that we currently had in place. We always had a separate sexual harassment policy. We started by looking at that as a revision, and that's when we also looked at the first policy that we've already discussed.
No, I understand, but we took the, we've taken, I'm trying to understand, I went through, and I'm trying to understand what was the basis of deleting JBCC and completely rewriting it. I mean, what is it that it does?
The former policy didn't really clearly identify the complaint procedure, it didn't identify the Title IX coordinator, so it really outlines the steps for what happens when a complaint is made, how the investigation proceeds, it just more clearly delineates that procedure.
Okay, I guess, okay, let me be more direct. Who lawyered the words?
Our attorneys.
So, the attorneys wrote this? This is where this came from?
Yes.
I think this is a fairly standard, unlike...
Can you come to the microphone for the... Let's speak up.
Unlike the previous policy we've been talking about, this, these policies have been around, sexual harassment policy has been around for a long, long, long time. And I think that these changes were an outgrowth of some discussions that we had surrounding a complaint that was filed in the investigation of the complaint and are basically clarifying in nature. I don't think they extend the policy beyond the confines of the original policy, it just is an attempt to try to, because you're required to have this policy, and it's been around, I imagine this thing's been around for a long, long time.
No, right, I understand. And I guess, I guess where I'm coming from is, one of the things about the VSBA policies, okay, not perfect, but they're a template, and they've been vetted by a few people before we, we see them, so then we tailor them the way we want, but there's some basis. I was just trying to understand, because this is, this isn't just a small change, this is, we deleted two pages and then we created, whatever, eight pages.
She can answer that question.
So, eight pages. So, I was trying to make sure that, okay, so a whole new policy, and is this an untested policy, or is this the first time, you know, like...
No, this is really a standard wording that has been utilized according to the conversations we've had with our attorneys. Our, our policy was originally adopted in 1986, it was last revised in 2011, and it didn't really clearly identify what that sexual harassment policy looked like. It didn't clearly say what the steps were. So, for instance, if I was working with our attorneys to address a complaint that had come in, it really didn't clearly identify the steps that you were to follow. This really kind of helps you know what the timeline is, how the investigation will proceed, those types of things. It wasn't in the old policy. So, they've really tried to just lay that out more clearly.
And when you say our attorney, you're talking about Mr. Lacy's office?
Yes, Mr. Lacy's office, correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Cordasco?
I actually have two questions. Is there a big reason why at the very end of the policy where it says the right to alternative complaint procedure, does that have to be in there? Because that seems to me that you're almost inviting to say to somebody, well, if you're not happy with what we do, you have the right to do something civilly. Does that have to be there?
I think so.
My understanding is that that doesn't preclude any sort of legal action.
Well, the purpose of this is to make it clear that, you know, you can pursue this complaint procedure, or if you don't want to do that, you can go ahead and pursue your legal rights.
But do we say that in every one of the other policies? Because this is a silly story, but there's a, there's a hotel in Texas, it's on the, it's on the water. It has sliding glass doors going into all the rooms, and for a long time it put up signs that said, "Please do not fish from the balcony." And they had constant cracked windows because people fished from the balconies. They simply removed the signs and their problems stopped. So, I almost wonder if that doesn't put it in their mind to say, well, I can still do this silly, so if it doesn't have to be there, do we have... this silly. So if it doesn't have to be there, do we have to put it there?
Well, we'll be happy to take a look at it. I think that frankly, probably appears in some other policies.
Just, just to check on that. And the other one is, earlier in the policy, when we start to go through the file, the report, which I think is, it's very well documented. I appreciate the fact that we've added days because we might not be able to get to all the people that need to be a part of the investigation. But I don't like the very last paragraph. Again, I feel as if it's ambiguous to say, behavior that is not unlawful or does not rise to the level of illegal harassment or retaliation may nevertheless be deemed unacceptable for the educational environment or the workplace. Again, that's very, very, very mushy, and I, again, would like it to stop that said, you could say demeaning or otherwise harmful actions are prohibited. No reason to go into what, what type of demeaning. It's all demeaning.
Well, with regard to that first comment you made, I would respectfully suggest that we ought to keep that because I'm thinking about things when, most recently, for instance, when a child abuse complaint was made and was investigated and it was determined it was not child abuse, but it was totally inappropriate, unprofessional, and something we didn't want our employees to engage in. In other words, the teacher did not, the teacher's actions did not rise to the level of sexual abuse, sex abuse. But you would agree, everybody in this room would agree, that it was totally inappropriate, making suggestive comments and things of this sort. I think the purpose of this is just to put people on notice that, hey, look, even if your comments, even if your actions don't rise to the level of sexual harassment, they can be, you know, they can be so unprofessional, inappropriate, what have you, you know, that could lead to disciplinary action. But if it does, that's handled under a different procedure. In other words, they would have rights and so on and so forth. You just, you know, we can't mete out punishment without people having, having rights. And the rights would be under the grievance procedure, you know, adopted by the State Board of Education or the class fund employee's grievance procedure that you've adopted. So I think that's the purpose of it, is just to put people on notice that even if it doesn't rise to this level, which is a fairly significant level, you know, it's not something trivial. But if it doesn't rise to this level, it may be something that's unprofessional and may result, say, in a reprimand, or something, something of that sort. Does that make any sense?
It does, but I, I don't know that I think it needs to be in this policy. I think that, that's a communication that you have in an orientation or something like that where you're saying that. And I also, again, don't think that any particular type of problem should be, whether it's, you know, heterosexual, same-sex, whatever. I don't think we need to, I, I think we can say demeaning or otherwise harmful actions are prohibited, and stop right there.
Do you remember where that is?
Okay, it's right above three. And any other comments?
Well, I would just rather have something written, I'm sorry, rather written, I think, than implied, or it, because if it's set at a, at an orientation, but then it's not written, then we've got nothing to hold anybody to. So I would, I would feel, I would rather have it in the policy.
Okay.
One, one thing we need to say about this policy that perhaps we haven't said, and this policy is as much to protect the school division as it is to protect other folks. And this is an area of significant exposure to liability, because if you have a hostile environment caused by these sort of things, then, then we could have a problem. And, and we really want to be as specific as we can be. Yes, sir?
Mrs. Coop?
And I, I would like to know, following up Mrs. Cordasco about the, you know, with all due respect for the Texas hotel story, I, I think we want to make it clear that we are supportive of people's rights to pursue other avenues. I mean, I don't think we want to encourage that, but I, I would feel more comfortable if it, we don't want to be perceived as trying to hide that either, so.
Mr. Nichols?
My Latin teacher said, non scripta non est, which means if it's not in writing, it doesn't exist. So I, I think the explanation that you offered toward, for this, clarify it a little bit, and if there's some way to, to make that kind of a clarification, I think would be helpful.
Stephanie remembers what I said.
Sure.
That's good.
Videotape will remember it, too.
Yes.
So for the, so these, both these policies will come back to us for another first reading and, and with these, with these comments and input.
So to make, to be clear, this one's going to be split into two, right? One for the students and one for personnel with, and you're just going to go through and double check it?
This is fine.
Nothing's changing in this philosophically?
Just that one sentence I wanted you to look at.
The one sentence, which one, I'm sorry?
That, that says that the, basically, just we, we won't demeaning or otherwise harmful actions are prohibited.
I'm sorry, where, where is that?
At the very end of behavior that's not unlawful, the other sentence I brought up.
Right above, right above three.
I'm sorry, what page?
There's no page number.
Right, right above number three, Jeff. Is that where it was? Responsibilities of Title IX coordinator.
So what, why are we, what are we getting rid of, demeaning?
I just asked them to look at that, because I don't know that I think that we should call out one particular thing. We should just say.
If you point it out a little bit.
I'm sorry?
Oh, don't, she's got it, she's got it.
Okay, so that's the one thing that you're, you're maybe go back and look at to see whether you need to?
Yes, we'll, we'll take a look at this.
No, I'm just asking, I'm not.
Yes, they're going to take a look at it.
I just want to understand.
They're going to take a look at it.
What we're doing, so we're, you know, why we're, why we have them here.
Okay, so can we move on?
Well, and, and he's mentioned, you're not, you're not talking about, you had mentioned something about murging. You're not planning on doing that with this, right?
On what?
You mentioned that earlier about murging.
No, no, we're not, because, because.
Yeah, but you did say that.
I know, and I misspoke. This is.
Okay.
7.05, policy JB, equal educational opportunities, nondiscrimination, first reading.
Here we already do have a policy split. This is strictly the student policy for equal educational opportunities. It just stipulates that we do provide equal opportunities to all students. It provides a complaint procedure which aligns with our other investigation timelines. It identifies the compliance office, officer, prohibits retaliation, and provides annual notice requirements.
Is this?
Are there any board member comments, Mr. Fuentes?
This is.
Is this a, a new one?
No, this is actually a revision. We are, though, however, I'm sorry, I forgot to say this, recoding it. It currently is JP for us, and in order, as we're doing these revisions to align it with the VSBA model policy, we are recoding it as JB.
So.
But this is a revision of a current policy. So you will see there are just some strike throughs. What we did in the first section with policy statement, we have outlined what the school board shall. That came out of the policy committee work. And then we adjusted the timeline to, to mirror the other investigation procedures so that everything's consistent and, and identified the compliance officer.
Okay, and it aligns with VSBA, okay.
Mrs. Cordasco?
The other thing I was going to say is, if indeed we do end up embedding the, the sexual harassment in to the other one, we're not doing that, okay, then we don't, that, my just concern was that that was reflected on that, okay.
Mr. Nichols?
One of the things that was brought up that, that is kind of a concern, and I'm glad that the counselor is here. And I think we've kind of addressed it, you know, that there are times that people are falsely accused of doing something, and then in the process of the investigation, would it be of benefit, obviously not having really thought profoundly about the unintended consequences of making the statement, but really having a process that delineates how you can address the, the individual or family when the issue is resolved and it's proven that this person's, the accusation against this person or the student, personnel or student was false. A process that sometimes is anything really said to, it was addressed by a speaker this evening, you know?
Yeah, I, I got to tell you, I think that's good management. I, I.
I mean, we go to great lengths to say what the process is if a person is, is perceived to have done something that was not.
Well, you know, I think that, I, I think that when you have one of these things that results in an investigation, the investigation shows there's no merit in the complaint that's made. I think that we owe it, if it's an employee, we owe it to the employee. If it's a student, we owe it to the student to say, no, we found there was no merit and we ought to document that. It ought to be documented in the file, which it is, through the report of the investigation. And, and I really do think that that's, that's important, to, to do that. I think that's just good, good manners.
Yeah, I was just saying, should it be in our policy?
Well, we'll take a look at that. There should be something in there. I, I must confess that this one, I'm not as, as familiar with it, but there should be something in there about the report.
I didn't see anything in there.
Okay, well, then we'll take a look at that, put it in there.
Any other board member comments on policy JB? Moving to policy 7.06, policy GB, equal employment, nondiscrimination, first reading.
And as these, some of these policies are, obviously, were together. These were split, and so this is just the employment version of the one we just dealt with. So we were updating it from 1974 to include the same time of timelines and, and the process.
Any board member questions, the, Mr. Fuentes?
Yes, sir. So the, I just, I'm trying to understand the, you know, going through it. So the policy review and evaluation, somehow, well, first, the policy is put in place, I'm okay with. I'm trying to understand what was there before, the old GB. Is that embedded, parts of that embedded in the new one somehow? Because the other one talks about.
No.
Almost that, in fact, that.
It's to reflect more the coding of the way it is at VSBA. The old GB.
The old GB looks like it belongs in the.
There is another policy, correct.
Yeah, that's.
It's addressed elsewhere.
Right, that's all, so I didn't know if that old GB had some other intended purpose.
No, we're just trying to align with VSBA being their GBs.
And then the other question I had was, did we not have an EEO policy before?
We do, and I think it's, the next thing we're talking about deleting.
The next one. Oh, we're going to, okay, so that's, okay.
Mrs. Cordasco?
I just wondered with reference to what Mr. Nichols said, would it ever be a possibility that a letter could be written saying that the, or do we do that already, that there was no, no findings of, of guilt?
I will look, but the policy should very clearly say that when, when there's an investigation, that a report of the investigation goes to both the accuser and the accused. And that report would say whether there was a finding or no, you know, did it happen or didn't happen, or whatever the finding is.
So you can, you'll clarify that?
Yep, well, if it, I'd be shocked if it isn't there, but if, Dr. Nichols tells me it didn't.
No, it, that, that phrase is there. It just doesn't necessarily delineate what that means.
Okay, any other comments on policy GB? 7.07, policy GBA, equal employment opportunities deletion, first reading. Mr. Baker?
This is just a delete, because we're moving all the other policies back, and to get all the codes lining up with the VSBA. So all the things that are covered, other things that we've already mentioned in the last policy.
Any board member comments? 7.08, policy GC, thank you, Mr. Baker, policy GCBEA, leave of absence for non-FMLA eligible employees, retitled leave without pay, first reading.
The, the change with, with this policy is, is for employees to be eligible for FMLA, you have to be here a year, work 1,250 hours. We already have that policy, but the policy, the way it's, the way the policy, what we recommend to change is that you're not going to earn years of service credit for VRS if you're on leave without pay. And so we're adding that part in to say, if you're out more than five days in a month, leave without pay, and you've already exhausted that, that you're also not going to earn VRS years of credit.
Okay, any board member comments?
Just wondered how much that's going to say.
You know, I'm not so, excuse me. At least, I'm, they have crackdowned at VRS now, as you probably know. And if you're on extended leave of absence without pay, they're not going to count that stuff anymore. They, they have really cracked down on that. So I'm not so sure we're not stating the obvious here.
Oh, okay.
I'm, I'm being serious.
Oh, no, I understand that.
Mr. Fuentes?
On the portion, it looks like you took the VSBA, I assume this came from VSBA, right?
Correct.
Yeah, the VSBA, and then you inserted, we inserted two paragraphs of our own?
Correct.
Correct. The, the two black paragraphs with the red in the middle, the bullet, the bullet ties.
I think that was actually left over from before, from what our current policy was.
Okay, right, so, well, one, there's a formatting issue there, but the other part is, the third bullet, could you explain to me a little bit more about that?
Health insurance?
Yeah, the, the, this board will continue to pay, I guess, we'll end up paying our share, and the, the employee has to pay his share even though he's, right, is that what I'm, is that how I'm reading that?
Correct.
A lot of times, I, I didn't know that in some cases when you go with leave without pay, that you're, you're end up stuck paying for the whole amount sometimes. I just want to make sure I understand what we're saying in that paragraph, that it's fully, the third paragraph, third bullet, excuse me.
Yeah, the, the school board will continue to pay its, its portion.
All right, the question is, since it's, since they're on leave, leave of absence, does, does the employer pay their part of the group?
The employee then, in order to keep, we may pay our portion, the employee has to pay his part, right?
Correct, right.
Okay, but should there be a statement that, first, I guess everybody's okay with that. And, and the second part of that is, should there not be a statement that says he's got to pay for his part also in order to maintain the insurance, for he or she?
We can, and we can add that.
Well, I don't, I'm just, I'm asking, I mean, is it?
That's what we currently do, I mean, the practices.
The practices that they have.
They have to pay.
And they, and they fully understand that, that it's, it's.
It might be good to hand that in.
Right, that it's pay as they go, not pay when I come back, or pay whenever, or whatever. I just, I don't, I don't know what the words are, but.
Mr. Baker, you know what he's looking for?
It goes to the clarity thing.
Yeah, that's good, that's good stuff. Agreed.
Okay.
Any other comments on the policy GCBEA? Okay, 7.09, 2015, 2016, student code of conduct, first reading.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would suggest that we pull that, and I'll bring it back for the first reading when we bring out back the revised policies, because a lot of these policies are directly reflected in the code of conduct.
Okay, is that going to be a problem for you to begin this full year?
We have two more board meetings, so hopefully.
Mr. Nick?
No, sir, it will not be.
Mr. Nick?
When the, unless it didn't appear on my computer the way it should have, if there are the changes, I was looking for the changes through the document, and I didn't see anything noted as the changes.
The, the changes are all directly reflected in policies that you have either already had as a first reading last month and are voting on tonight. For instance, JFC, areas of offense in their definitions, or some of the policies that have been presented for a first reading tonight. So since the revisions were all provided in the specific policy readings, we did not, we, we did not also designate it in there.
Probably a good idea, just to mark which is changing.
Probably a good idea, just to mark which is changed in the Code of Conduct.
I think it would be helpful, at least for me, if I could see, as I'm going through it, that I'm knowing what's there that's been changed. I mean, especially after 10 AM.
It became very extensive and cumbersome because of some of the changes to the policy, but we can certainly do that.
Yeah, because then I can head toward those things. And I don't want to, I don't have to read things that are already been standard.
I think what she's telling you, it's going to be mostly red ink, but...
Yeah, well, maybe.
We'll see that.
Okay. I'm seeing red right now.
Understood.
Okay.
She thinks she's getting away.
Okay, moving on to action items, 8.01, Personnel Actions, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of item, Agenda Item 8.01, Personnel Action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Sersa?
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 8.02, Release from Compulsory Tenants, Case Number R16-01, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the adoption of the request for release from compulsory attendance, R16-01.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved in second to approve release from compulsory attendance, Case Number R16-01. Is there any discussion? Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Thank you. 8.03, Authorization for VHSL Membership, is there a motion?
I move the authorization for VHSL membership.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? So moved in second for approval of the authorization for VHSL membership, Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 8.04, Capital Projects Fund Balance Spending, is there a motion?
I move approval of the Capital Projects Fund Balance Spending.
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second for approval of the Capital Projects Fund Balance Spending request to complete the repairs for Jamestown High School tennis courts.
Yes.
Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Aye. Is there a motion for approval of Policy JD, School Census?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Agenda Item 8.06, Policy JD, School Census, second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second for approval of Policy JD, School Census, Ms. Sersa?
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Is there a motion for approval of Policy JD, School Census? Second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second for approval of Policy JD, School Census, Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 8.07, Policy JFC, Areas of Offense and Their Definitions, is there a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval of Policy JFC, Areas of Offense and Their Definitions, Ms. Sersa?
Mr. Nichols?
Whoa. So based on...
I apologize.
Yeah, based on the fact that we pulled the Student Conduct Book, is anything that we did tonight going to, because the first part of the Student Conduct Book is very similar to this, so is anything going to change or should you go?
Yes, please.
Mr. Fuentes?
Doctor Constance.
Is there any impact to this based on anything that we've done?
No, no, strictly the rules, and none of that was discussed.
Well, I understand strictly the rule, okay, I'll wait. You said strictly the rules. The rule's based on policy, though, and I just want to make sure...
That is the policy that has our rules, and we review it and revise it each year. And at the last meeting, we brought it with some very minor changes to just a few of the rules. If you recall, we did some major revisions to this policy last year. And so the committee did some minor tweaking of the wording this year.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because, you know, there is this thing on harassment and discrimination and all that, so as long as it's not impacted...
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes, appreciate that. Is there any other discussion? It's been moved in second for approval of Policy JFC, Areas of offenses and Their Definitions, Ms. Sersa?
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. 8.08, Revision of Policy JGCA, Teacher Removal of Students from Class, second reading, is there a motion?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second for approval of Revision of Policy JGCA, Teacher Removal of Students from Class, Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 8.09, Revision of Policy JHGAE, Reporting Child Abuse or Neglect, second reading.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Agenda Item 8.09, Revision of Policy JHG/GAE, the reverse parenthetical, reporting child abuse or neglect, second reading.
Second.
I think I said it better. Is there any discussion? It's been moved in second for Revision of Policy JHGAE, Reporting Child Abuse or Neglect, second reading. It's easier the second time. Ms. Sersa?
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 8.10, Policy JN, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges, second reading, is there a motion?
Some move.
Still moved.
Does one of you want to second it?
Second.
Any discussion?
I...
Yes, ma'am.
I would just, just to continue to keep an eye on these fees to make sure that we are, you know, that we're using the materials that we're asking parents to pay for, you know, if we're requiring an extra book to make sure that we are, you know, that we're looking at that every year to make sure that we're truly using it, and we're not just spending, you know, having someone pay a fee for a workbook that we don't necessarily use anymore.
Like they do in college.
To keep in, well, so just, you know, making sure that we're visiting that yearly.
I appreciate that. It's a good, it's a good comment. Any other comments, questions? It's been moved in second for approval, for Agenda 8.10, Policy, Approval of Policy JN, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Can I get a motion so that we can at least discuss it, 8.11, Reschedule August 4th, Board Meeting to August 11th?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
As the calendar has come to play, there are three board members who can't, right now currently can't make the August 4th meeting. Is there any objection to moving it to August 11th? Discussion. Ms. Emanuel?
I just want to say that when we set the calendar, it seems to me it's incumbent upon us to write our calendars, and so it's a little bit offensive to me because we make those rules and we say to the public out here, this is when we're going to meet, and then when we change the meetings, then it's really, it's not fair to the public, and it's really not fair for others who have made plans based on other things. I understand that things change in the course of January to August, but I do think we should be careful about it. I never objected when Ms. Larson got sent on VSPA school, on school board stuff, because she was an officer in the Virginia School Boards Association. But other things seem to me that personal things, our first thing should be our job as a public servant.
Ms. Larson?
I would just add that I think that we just need to be mindful, if other people are not able to make it on the 11th, that it's not that they don't, you know, they don't see this as important, just see it as a game change, because we've had to change things in the past when we've had, we've had national conference or something of that sort. But it's just, it's, in summer, this is our, this is our first or second year going to two meetings in August. So that's a little bit, that's a little bit of a change, maybe.
Yeah, historically, a couple of years ago, we asked for two meetings in August, largely to facilitate the personnel hirings before the start of school.
Right.
That was the rationale.
Sure, certainly, and I understand that completely. So I think it's just getting that summer time and trying to work with your families and get onto your vacations, et cetera. So, but I just, I just don't want the public to think that because X amount weren't able to make it on the 4th, that the people that aren't here on the 11th are, yeah.
Right, right. Mrs. Cordasco?
I just wanted to say, I don't think that anybody necessarily requested a change in the meeting, it just became evident that a significant number were not going to be able to be there, and that was just simply good policy to think about, making sure that there was a good representation at the board meetings. I know that life does change significantly, and certainly people have a right to a private life, but I also think that there are sometimes other obligations that involve other people that you cannot always control. So I appreciate very much the flexibility.
Yeah, I would, I would just add that no one actually asked me to change the date of the meeting. It was, I just, with three members absent and so close to a quorum, I just felt it was prudent to look to change it. And I think, I think as judged by our work tonight, that, you know, I think every one of the board members takes their, takes their role seriously and their work seriously, and it was just a series of unfortunate events which got us to this. So understand that, and understand if a member or so can't go to the 11th, that we're just, we're trying to accommodate to make sure that all the, as many representatives as possible will be here for the, for the school board meeting, particularly when we're discussing such important policies. Mr. Fuentes?
So you mentioned quorum, so what is the minimum number we can have?
My problematizing?
Four.
That's the minimum we can have to have a meeting per Rock's rules?
Right, right.
So if you know that you have four scheduled and somebody gets stuck in traffic or something like that, it can jeopardize the ability to actually hold the meeting.
It's three, it's three plus one. You've got seven on the board, it's three plus one.
So more than 50%.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I would just add, I mean, that's fine that we're going to move it. I appreciate that we're having a discussion on it. I think it's important, I can say this as a board, before I even got on the board as a regular attendee, and I know that some other people were attendees that came to the board meetings, that it's important that the public know that we're doing this well in advance, because, and I assume that we're going to do the public notices where we're supposed to do the public notices, but even when we do those, as a regular attendee in the past, there's many times I showed up to the wrong building, or showed up to both, I would drive across town and find out that, yeah, they changed the meeting, and I was a regular attendee and didn't know about it. So I think it's important that we have the discussion, and that's why I think it's important that we be sensitive to, that we don't do this just at a whim, right?
And I think, Ms. Sersa, what is the notification, it's X amount of days for a meeting?
Three.
Three days.
Three days and two, two locations, one in your office and one in a normal public place.
Website.
Well, it's got to be some public place.
On the door.
Right, right, but I think, I think we're all...
Delivered by the sheriff.
I think we, you know, we have added meetings, we have rescheduled meetings, and we've had board members show up at the wrong place, too.
Yes.
Not that any of us would ever admit to that, right? Is there any other discussion? It's been moved in second for approval to reschedule the August 4th Board Meeting to August 11th, Ms. Sersa?
Ms. Emanuel?
No.
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Abstained.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mrs. Cordasco?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you for all that. 9.01, Board Member Comments, are any, any comments from board members tonight? Mr. Nichols?
Three of us today participated, and I'll let the other two speak for themselves in the educational conference at Richmond. And it was a very good conference, and they had these mini breakout sessions, about five, plus a good presentation on team building, and a presentation by the First Lady of the Commonwealth of Virginia on the issue of child nutrition and hunger in the Commonwealth, where there are about 350,000 students, young people, in our Commonwealth that don't have a regular meal, and what efforts are at play to try to eliminate hunger in the Commonwealth. So it was good.
Good. Mrs. Cordasco?
I just wanted to say that I did not get the benefit of attending the breakout sessions because Mr. Paula and I were actually conducting one. We were able to talk about our experience with Manufacturing Day, and we're able to engender some enthusiasm with some of the other school boards throughout the Commonwealth. So appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Any other board member comments?
First of all, just, just in response to one of the speakers tonight, I can assure you that this, this, the school board and this school division are committed to the IB program at James River Elementary, and are working hard to make sure that that program certainly continues, but also thrives and moves forward. After the policy discussions tonight, I just want to once again thank Mrs. Cordasco, Mrs. Cook for their good work on the, on looking at these policies, and also for all the board members and the, and the good discussion that we've had, and the thorough vetting that we give these policies, that one of our most important jobs, and I think that
we had very good discussion tonight, and I, and something I think we should all be very proud of, so. Any other board matter discussions? We will set the agenda for the August 11th meeting, which will basically, everything on, in the discussion proposed, agenda items except for 7.03, 7.04, and 7.09. Yes, ma'am?
Location will still be here?
Well, I'm getting to the upcoming meetings, that's next.
Just checking.
So is that, is everybody's understanding the agenda? Upcoming meetings, work session and action items on August 11th here in room 400 at 6:30 on August 4th. We good? Okay. Regular meeting of the school board on August 18th at 6:30 in Building F over at the county, and work session actions on September 1st at 6:30, once again here. Yes, ma'am? Am I good?